I should turn on my mic.
The United States of America and to the Republic which spans one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, welcome everyone. Prior to this meeting, we did hold an executive session for legal issues. Commissioner Evans, do we have opening comments?
Yes, welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. We're all in this together. Just a reminder, only questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under citizens to be heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. See you in September. Where did the summer go? As we move through back to school and into football season, let's not forget all the fun we had this summer in Calhoun. Movies in the park, our first salsa night, National Night Out with Chico's Vibe, Chester County Town Tour at Spackman Davis Farm, the grand opening of the new municipal bridge, the completion of nearly all IDA-related repairs, being awarded Municipality of the Year by Chester County Historic Preservation Network, new businesses planting the seeds of opportunity along Lincoln Highway, and most importantly, a summer that wasn't defined by COVID. But wait, there's more. Our September fun kicks off Saturday, the 9th, at Municipal Park with our 15th Annual Town Community Day. If you want to be a part of it all, contact Abby Swann to volunteer. If you just got your heart set on simply enjoying the festivities, nothing wrong with that, just come on out and bring 100 of your closest friends. The fun starts at 3:00 PM with food vendors, live music by Roger That, dance performances, a roaming magician, bounce houses, face painting, art show, caricatures, introduction to pickleball, over 70 vendors and exhibitors, first responders, and to cap the night off, fireworks. The pool is deep. We've had a strong response to our call for managerial applicants and resumes continue to come in. We've got a long list of promising individuals, more than enough to start the first round of the interview process, with the first four scheduled for next week. Stay tuned. When we all work together, there's nothing we can't do. Spread kindness, everyone. Anger, grudges, and resentments are not worth our time or energy. Compassion, empathy, peace, and love, these are what make the world go around.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. All right, next on the agenda, citizens to be heard for agenda items. I will reach out to the township here. Anybody? I do not see any hand raised at the moment. How about Zoom World? Yes, Mark, just name an address, please.
Sure. Mark DeYoung, 20 Beaver Run Road. Hi, everybody. How are you?
Good, welcome.
Good. The gentleman I'm talking about is Lisa being able to sign for the new PPO plan, which is perfectly acceptable, makes all the sense in the world, the finance director would take care of that. That's not really on my question. I just have questions about the plans themselves. What percentage does the township pay compared to the employees of their medical care?
Seventy percent? Yeah, Lisa states employees pay 70%? Seven? Oh, 7%. Does that answer the question there?
Well, it answers the question, but that's...
I'm sorry, go ahead. You're a little muffled here.
Sorry, it answers the question, but seems well out of the norm of the regular business world. I know a couple of you own businesses, and I'm sure you're not paying 93% of the cost. So I followed it up with a question to say, how does that compare to other municipal plans in our area and state?
Microphone helps?
The state I couldn't comment about, but locally with the CAG or Consortium, out of about 27 municipalities, there are 15 that pay 100% of... Now, this is for exempt employees. I'm not sure what group of employees you're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was just for exempt.
Yeah, so 15 of those municipalities pay 100% for exempt employees. There are, I want to say, seven that pay 99%, and then the balance is anywhere from 3% to 4%.
Well, that's huge for the public world, so... One other question, and I don't know if it's probably not happening because we're paying that high percentage for one of the best plans there is, which is the PPO. But has there ever been talk, Lisa, about a high deductible health plan, which can lead to great results for not only employees, but also for the township? I have a high deductible health plan, and I've been able to save thousands of dollars for future health issues through that plan. And the way it worked is that I would pay 1/3 of what a PPO would cost, and the township would match that 2/3. So after a while, the employee builds up quite some money in order to pay for dental plans, things that aren't always covered. So I don't know if the townships or municipalities have discussed a high deductible health plan.
Okay, I appreciate the comments there, Mark. Lisa, I assume the PPO is just being renewed.
It's the same plan that we've had, basically.
It's the same policy that we've had.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's just a continuation.
Correct. It went by the wayside after the last member retired, and we never got notice that they closed the plan, so we just want to reinstate the plan.
I mean, it's always good to go shopping and see if there's a better policy out there.
Yeah, absolutely. And we do that every year. It's just to reinstate the plan, just to get it going again. That's all.
Well, just one last statement. People are very afraid of the high deductible health plan because the name itself, you know, gives you some worry, but it's actually a great plan. If you have to go to a doctor during the beginning of the year, you can always negotiate what's coming out. The only thing is, you know, you have to save up for prescriptions in the very beginning of the year, but your balance can grow. My balance has been growing for 10 years. And I even have professionals, doctors and lawyers at banks that invest that money into the stock market. So there are high benefits to a high deductible plan. I just think it's something to bring up with the other townships or municipalities that we deal with, and see if you can't get together and figure out that this is a good plan.
Okay, I appreciate the comments there, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Spalding? Just name an address, please. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. 4-6 Lloyd Avenue downtown.
Hi Cheryl, welcome.
Thank you. The ordinance you're going to talk about tonight for the Chapter 29 qualifications and the 25-mile thing seems fine to me, but I had a question about something. In the first section, 29-5, I was curious about whether that was new language or it was always in there, because it makes it clear that the new person coming in, and I'll quote it, "must have the ability to deal in an amicable and professional manner with the general public and township officials and employees." That is certainly...I'm very happy to see that because clearly I believe that was lacking in our previous township manager, and I was curious whether that was added or existed before.
Actually, that was existing.
Really?
Yeah.
Yes.
Interesting. Thank you. That was just my question.
Okay. All right, thank you, Cheryl. All right, any other public comment, citizens to be heard? All right, none at this time. Moving right along to Township Solicitor, Ms. Camp.
Thank you. So I'm participating remotely this evening. Hopefully you can hear me. Ms. Spalding has a nice parlay into the next matter. It is to open a public hearing for the consideration of Ordinance 2023-05, which would amend Chapter 29 of the Town Code. That chapter deals with the manager position, and there's one minor change being proposed, and that's in Section 29-5. The current language at the end of Section 29-5 states that the manager need not be a resident of the township at the time of appointment, but shall become a permanent township resident within one year of the date of his employment unless an exception is granted. The proposed amendment would change that last sentence to state that the manager need not be a resident of the township, but within one year of the date of his or her employment as manager, they must establish permanent residence within 25 miles of the township's boundaries unless an exception is granted by the board. So again, in the interest of trying to be able to find a larger pool of candidates who might not be able to find suitable housing in the township, the board felt it was appropriate to change that particular section. Because it is an ordinance change, we did have to advertise tonight's hearing in the Daily Local News, which we did on August 23rd, and I also sent a copy of the ordinance to the Daily Local and to the Law Library for public inspection. So pretty simple change. Happy to answer any questions if the board members or anybody in the public has one.
Commissioners, any questions on this?
No questions, no.
All right, I'll reach out to public. Anybody in the township building, questions on this? I do not see any hands raised. Zoom World? Mark, you're muted.
I didn't push anything, so I don't know how I got on there, so just a mistake.
Okay. Yes, Cheryl? Have your hand raised again?
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, I think that's an excellent idea, because in the real world nowadays, traveling a distance of 25 miles to get to a job is certainly nothing, and I do think we're going to get a much better pool of people to choose from by going to 25 miles to any distance beyond, and then 25 miles later. It makes perfect sense to me. I don't think in the real world, the days of people living nearby are...it's just not relevant.
So true. All right, thank you, Cheryl. Any other comments? There's no other questions? Entertain a motion to adopt?
So moved.
There we go. Moved second, moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, 4-0.
I'd like to interrupt the meeting for just a second. I don't know. I'd like to introduce one of our State House Representatives here. This is Danielle Freelotten.
Welcome, how are you? We have a mic, yes, there you go.
You have to turn it on.
Sorry, thank you, Mark.
Yes.
I might not stay long, but we were supposed to present a citation tonight, but apparently I got the dates mixed up. So I'm just here to say hello, and we were hoping to give you guys a citation, which I imagine will be coming, for your historical preservation recognition, Representative Williams and I, so just to say thanks, everyone, and congratulations on your recognition.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
All right, then, Ms. Camp, we have one more item?
Yes, and Dave Gibbons, Abby, he will be participating. I don't know if you can see if he's on, but he is the engineer. If the board recalls, and I know the President, Mr. Mahn was not here for the presentation, but Eli Khan and representatives of the Cohen family came to a board meeting not so long ago. They would like to...they petitioned the board, the township, to rezone the property that the Cohen family owns, located at 4109 Lincoln Highway. The property is currently split zoned. The portion of the property that's located closer to Lincoln Highway is Zone TV1, and the portion of the property further in the rear is Zoned R4. The property is currently being used as an active junkyard, and the Cohen family actually has been trying to find potential buyers. They indicated to the board that they do have people that would be interested in continuing the junkyard use, but they have more of an interest in trying to sell it for residential development. They hired an attorney. Mr. Khan is just acting as an agent for them in his expertise of development. He is not the potential developer necessarily. The Cohen family also retained counsel Brian Nagel from McElroy Harvey. They sent over a proposed zoning amendment, which would accomplish, you know, what they're trying to do in terms of allowing multifamily development. Your ordinance today does allow multifamily development. What they're proposing is some of the area in bulk standards would be a little bit different. And there's really, when you carefully examine the changes that they're proposing, there's really not as many changes as you would think looking at the ordinance. So Abby, if you could pull up on the screen, the sketch plan. They had presented a sketch plan. When Ray and I looked at the sketch plan, Ray had some suggestions about the width of the roads. Their original proposal was to have the roads be only 24 feet wide, and the problem with that width is that that does not allow parking on any side of the street. The roads need to be a minimum of 28 feet in width to allow parking, and one of the things that we, Ray and I, you know, in discussion with the applicant and their counsel and their engineer, we felt that parking would likely be an issue in denser developments. You know, oftentimes, I think the township already is experiencing some issues with townhome developments needing additional parking. So we encouraged them to sort of go back to the drawing board as far as the dimensions of the roads, and they were able to do that so that the roads are wider. The changes that they're proposing, number one would be to rezone, you know, the portion that's Zoned R4, how they presented it, it would allow a more dense multifamily development. When I say more dense, the area in bulk standards that they're seeking to change would be...I'm going to go through them. The first is the width of the townhomes. Currently today, your ordinance requires minimum width to be 24 feet wide. They would like to take that down to 20 feet wide, and they've indicated that that seems to be the product that is on the market today, smaller footprint of a home. The second change is the building setback line. Currently today, for multifamily developments, your ordinance requires 30-foot setback from the right-of-way and a 40-foot setback from the curb. What they're proposing is a 20-foot setback from the curb line. The next changes are the separations between the townhome units themselves. Currently today, side-by-side separation, if you had two townhome clusters, your ordinance today would require a minimum of 40 feet separation. They've proposed it to be 20 feet. If the homes are side to rear, currently you're at a 50-foot setback. They'd like to take it to 40. And then finally, if it's rear to rear, currently your ordinance is a 60-foot minimum setback. They want to take that to 40 feet. The current ordinance requires a perimeter track, so if you had a townhome development, the distance from the first, you know, the townhome to the property boundary, currently you require 50 feet. They're suggesting to take that to 25 feet. Everything else...oh, I know. Let's see. The ordinance today requires 50% open space, and their proposed ordinance didn't really have any standard for open space, but I believe that the sketch plan that they presented is able to maintain that 50% open space. Some of the other things that they have put into their draft ordinance, we believe are really better kept in your subdivision ordinance. So for example, they have some language about the street widths, the street alignment, and sidewalks. Those are topics that are currently contained within your subdivision ordinance, and as the board is aware, you're able to waive standards in SADO. So we encourage the developer and the applicant to not put those into a zoning text amendment, but instead to address those issues when we get to the subdivision land development stage of the game. So that's sort of the background of, you know, this is the second step. After they met with the board, the board was comfortable with a proposed multifamily development on this track. They'd like to see this reuse, is what we heard as the message. They've now put it into an ordinance format. Ray and I think there's a way to achieve what they want, but just to tweak the way you get to that through the ordinance. And we'll have Dave, if he's available, to sort of walk through the sketch plan and answer any questions the board has.
Thanks, Kristen. I'm here. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think you did a really good job touching on a lot of the topics. One thing I did want to note, though, Kristen, is in looking at the road width and allowing parking on one side of the street, we would actually propose that...I don't know if you guys can see the plan, but there's kind of two pods. Essentially, there's a grouping of townhomes that are up along Lincoln Highway, and then they're almost completely separated by a large area of floodplain and open space from the northern section that, excuse me, would access off a park drive. And so going back to the road widths and parking, we can actually provide more, you know, head-in type on-street parking, actual parking spaces on the southern pod here, and so we would actually propose to keep that.
David, could you hold on one second?
Sure.
Abby, are you able to get that up? Are you having trouble there?
If I share my screen, would you be able to see that?
Can she?
You should be able to. That would be great.
Let me try. Let me know if you can see that.
Oh, there you go.
Excellent. Thanks, Dave.
So I'm just going to zoom out to give you an idea. So it's a long, narrow property. It's deep, but it has a large area in the middle and kind of all the area along the northeastern side that's all floodplain. So like I said, we have two pods, one that's kind of up along Lincoln Highway, and then one almost toward the very back of the property that accesses off a park drive. And so going back to it, we would actually propose, we'll zoom in here, for the southern pod that's out along Lincoln Highway, we would like to keep the park, or I'm sorry, the roads at 24 feet wide, because just by the way this is all configured, we can get more parking, more parking spaces head in off of the road, like actual true parking spaces, than we could if we allowed parking on one side of the street. Because just by the way these units are all set up, there's very little room on the street to actually park, because a lot of it is driveways, as with most townhome communities. So the front would be 24-foot wide with a decent amount of head-in parking spaces. And then the northern section, we do have some head-in spaces. We have 10 head-in spaces, but we would also propose that to be 28-foot wide, as Ray suggested, so we could allow...you know, there would probably be, it's a smaller grouping of townhomes. We'd probably have four, five, or six spaces available along the road, maybe a little bit more. So it's kind of a combination, Kristen, of what Ray has suggested. I think it works out best that way and does provide the maximum number of overflow parking.
Okay, and that was, again, we'd want the board to weigh in on that. We just assumed that parking would be somewhat of an issue and a concern, so it's really up to the board on whether, you know, they think that I would want Ray or mainly Ray and maybe the civil engineer just to comment on, does a 24-foot wide road create any other issues, even if no parking? Is that sufficient for snowplow equipment, emergency vehicles, that kind of thing?
And I think we have room to be flexible either way. I just felt that there's very little room for on-street parking in that southern pod, so why artificially make it 24-foot wide? But I think we can work with the township either way on that.
Okay. And one other thing before I forget, because I know it's really important and near to Abby, she reminded us today that the township has a concept plan for a Beaver Creek Trail that would, part of it would run around, excuse me, along the rear of the property boundary here, near the valley run. And we did reach out to the applicant today to indicate, you know, would you be willing to allow that trail to go across the back of the property there? And Mr. Khan and Mr. Gibbons is on the call tonight. Both said that that shouldn't be an issue. There's sufficient land. They weren't proposing any development there. So that's one of the details we can work through as part of the land development. Typically, there is a requirement in your SADO that they provide public recreational land, so this would really be able to achieve that ordinance section if they were to provide a public trail across the rear of the property boundary. So that is something that is shown on the screen right now in purple, and the applicant is willing to work with the township on that.
Thank you, Kristen. Ray, you look like you were about to make a comment.
Well, I was just going to weigh in on that. So when we're talking about roads, our ordinance requires a minimum of 24 foot when it's a two-way drive aisle. But several years ago, probably 10 or more years ago, we adopted an ordinance that all roadways, all public roadways have to be fire apparatus access roads. So we use the fire code to determine those minimum requirements for width when it comes to parking. So 24-foot is more than fine, as long as there's no parking on the street. It has to be a minimum of 28 to have parking on one side, and it has to be greater than 32 feet to have parking on both sides.
And at each townhome, is there parking in the driveway? Is there a garage on these townhomes?
They're narrower, so they each have a driveway and a single-car garage.
Okay, so they can hold up to two cars themselves?
Correct.
And Dave, where are you now with, and obviously I know the plan will change a bit, but where are you with overflow parking? So forget the driveway and the garage. How many overflow spaces are you proposing?
So we've kind of roughly calculated, including a few on-street parking, where it makes sense to be around like 43, I think, overflow parking spaces. So that kind of calculates out to be about one for every two and a half units.
And would both of these be, would they operate as one development, or would it be marketed as two separate developments?
Well, I think they would be one.
Be one, okay.
Can I ask how many townhouses are you proposing to put on the...
I believe it's 103, and that would be like the absolute minimum. We obviously know, once we would get into engineering and stormwater, that that number may, you know, fluctuate down a little bit, but 103 is the absolute maximum number.
Maximum? You said minimum. You mean maximum?
I'm sorry, maximum, yes.
Yep.
It would not be more than 103.
And I mentioned in my opening remarks that there was, I believe you met the 50% open space that we would currently require. Do you know what the open space is on this plan?
It's, well, it's more than 50%. I'm not sure if you can see that screen, but there's a lot of land that is basically floodplain or riparian buffer. It's very constrained in that regard, so I just have written down here that it's greater than 50%, so I don't know that exact number.
Okay.
And as far as the width of the road, and I'm sorry, maybe I'm just repeating something, but are we set on 24 feet or 28 feet?
24 feet. They're proposing on the front section off Lincoln Highway, because there would be no parking allowed there, and they're providing additional off-street parking for overflow in the rear off a park drive, 28 feet with a couple pods of parking on one side to accomplish the additional overflow parking.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
Hi, Dave. Mark Evans here. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. I can only ever speak for myself, but I believe this is something that we want for the greater good. We definitely want to work with you on this. I think it's a great opportunity for Calhoun. It's a great opportunity for you to help us establish the new face of Lincoln Highway. The, I can say that the zoning subgroup had discussed some of this stuff, and a lot of the changes that you're suggesting are things that we were already looking at in the new zoning for townhomes. So I think this could be great. It could be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from residents here in the township building? We have two. Chris, come on up to the mic. Just name an address, please.
Good evening. Chris Parr, 582 Lloyd Avenue.
Hi, Chris.
Hi. Can you clarify again the driveway? Is it a single driveway or is it a double driveway?
It'd be a single-wide driveway that essentially would handle one car, but they would also have a single garage.
I, that's my biggest concern, because you may have these pods that people can walk all the way down the street, but I think you're going to run into the same issue some of the other developments have had, where they can't park on the street. And I know, in our case, we end up having to double our driveway, because when you're doing back-to-back cars, trying to get in and out, and if you have two people per home, you generally have two cars. So that is a concern of mine. How do you get in, because I'm sorry, I cannot see this print, how do you get in and out of the development?
Well, so there's two access points. One, well, I should say there's three access points. The front pod on Lincoln Highway will have somewhat of a small boulevard entrance. It's actually a very narrow... small boulevard entrance. It's actually a very narrow frontage on Lincoln Highway, so you know, uh, uh, there may be some changes to this, just once we start dealing with PennDOT. But right now, it's kind of a single boulevard entrance for the front pod. The rear is basically a, a U shape or a backwards C, I guess you could say, or horseshoe shape, where it's just a single loop drive coming off of Park Drive, looping around, and then coming back out onto Park Drive.
Okay. Are these gonna be rentals or owned?
That's a good question, and I do not know off the top of my head, but I believe they'll be for sale.
Because I sure wouldn't like to see these to be rentals.
Yeah, I, I'm, I am almost positive they will be, you know, typically sold like most other townhomes. It's, it's kind of Orion Homes, simple, more simple design, more affordable, that they've been doing a lot recently, and I believe they're, they sell them.
You said Ryan Homes?
Uh, that's, that's what they're, that's what they're based off of right now. That's who's, who's looking at this.
When you say affordable, what's affordable?
Unfortunately, I don't know. I'm just the engineer, so I don't, I don't usually get into that. You could ask the, the developer that at some point.
All right, I have more questions, but I think I've asked enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, thanks.
Tony, got a question? Up to the mic, please.
Hello, Tony DiSario, two fifty-one Loomis Avenue. Kristen Camp said something about the trail. Did you ever get a grant for that trail?
Abby, do you have a question on that? Not that section.
Yeah, we're not to that section yet. We're working on the first section in Lloyd Park, and we, we have a grant for the engineering. So we're still doing the engineering of the first section.
How much of the, uh, trail, the rest of the trail then?
Twenty years from now, it's probably the best-
We won't know the exact cost until they do the engineering for each section, if that makes sense. We're going a bit at a time, because it is expensive.
On that highway right there, I mean, I sat there tonight up by the gas station. Tonight backed up, the traffic backs up bad. There's a hundred, what, a hundred, a hundred homes, he said?
Well, it's split.
Yeah.
I believe there's forty towards the front and a rest or in the back.
Hundred or something. Uh, there's a lot of traffic going to be coming out of there. That's the only, uh, exit is Route thirty?
On the front section, yes.
And where's the other one, Exit two?
Off of Park Avenue. Park Drive, Park Drive?
Park Drive to Geo, Geo Carlson. There'd be two ways to, to exit there.
I don't think we're really talking about the exact, a real, exact plan at this point. What's here is just a first sketch idea. What we're talking about is making sure that the zoning is appropriate, and that it would work for the township. We're not voting on any-
Why don't they keep Route thirty businesses like it used to be instead of housing?
Well, I think we've gone enough on Midas.
And pizza, but.
Now, the new, new concept now is to have residential along with the business in that section, because we have the trailway, or, I'm sorry, the, the train service, as well as bus service along thirty. So it's good to take advantage of that.
Is there gonna be a traffic study done before you make a decision?
Usually it is, yes.
Always.
Can you explain the traffic study to me, Mark?
We're not there yet, Mr., we're not there yet, Tony. We're, we're very much in the design of the, just the ordinance language.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
I think I did see a hand raised. Cheryl?
We'll be rejoining.
Oh, you're muted? Do another try, Cheryl?
Yes, that better?
There you go.
Thank you. Um, I don't have questions about the plan. We're a long way from the plan, but I do have questions about the zoning. Okay. You're proposing a maximum of a hundred and three total units, and if I'm understanding you correctly, this is not taking the R four, R four zoning that's presently on part of the property and spreading it across the whole property. This is a complete change in the zoning code. Is that correct?
They, they, we, we're not there yet. We're, we're trying to figure out the best way to accomplish getting this plan to something that can be done on this parcel. So they had a, they had a proposed way to do it, but I don't think is the best way. We're still discussing it with their lawyer. I just wanted to make sure from a concept that this is something the board would like to see happen, and then we'll, we'll deal with the, there's many different ways we can skin this cat, and we need to figure out the best way to go about it.
Well, here's my problem with the skin the cat routine, and we've skinned the cat routine numerous times in this township, and ultimately not necessarily to our benefit. I would question whether this, if you're gonna rezone this parcel in particular for the benefit of Ryan, then I would wonder why that isn't spot zoning.
Well, that's exactly the way their ordinance is put together. I didn't, I thought that exact problem, and that's not what we want to do, Ms. Balding. That's why I said that, that we're looking at it from a more global perspective. The board had gone, spent two years on a task force trying to put together a new zoning amendment that addressed some of the uses along Lincoln Highway. So what we're doing is, is gonna be fairly consistent with what part, part of the, you know, zoning update that, that we're still working on. There, you know, as Mr. Evans said, there's a desire of the board to allow residential development along Lincoln Highway. So it's-
I'm, I'm not questioning that. I, I don't think anybody wants to see anything but residential done on the property, but I would say to you that I would not, I would not, and you as a lawyer cannot support a spot zoning for this, however.
That's right.
That being said, if what they're proposing is something that makes sense for the township overall, then it deserves to be put in the new zoning code, which we're developing.
Right.
That is a whole nother question for me, which is, and I understand they're gonna wanna move quickly and all that good jazz, but if we're going to develop a new zoning code for township townhouses, and, you know, that's gonna go into this new ordinance, then I would like to see that wait for the inclusion in that new zoning code, which you are in the process of, of approving, but is not approved.
Well, Mr. Cohen and the Cohen family is not willing to wait, and as they mentioned to us, they have a buyer that wants to continue the junkyard use, which they have every right to do. So it's the board's desire to not see that happen, and to fast forward this process. Our, our suggestion to the board is to not, whatever this developer, and by the way, the Ryan Homes is not a done deal, so nobody should get in their minds that this is already sold to Ryan Homes. We're not there yet. So the, the Cohen family, as the owner of the property, has come to the township and petitioned the board to try to change the zoning. What we have suggested, Ray, Stackhouse and myself, have suggested to the board is a lot of what they're proposing is what you were planning on doing anyway across the board along Lincoln Highway. So that's not just single out this track of ground. It doesn't have any unique circumstances, I think, that warrant different multifamily development standards. Let's apply those across all of where you were going to allow multifamily development along Lincoln Highway.
So let me be sure-
That's what we're trying to work through.
Okay, so let me be sure I understand what you just said. You are not suggesting, and that we accept as a township that this property be zoned specifically for this property, since clearly that's spot zoning, and rather than that, whatever is developed on this property, which is acceptable for this property, will be applied, apply across all the properties like it along Lincoln Highway. Is that correct?
Whatever, yeah, whatever ultimately the board decides should be the district, and, and, yeah.
In that, in that case, I would say to the commissioners that they need to look closely, not, not just at this particular property and this plan, but as Ray open, you know, Ray suggests that there are some issues with the widths of roads, whatever. I don't know, that's a plan issue, but that being said, I think he, they, the commissioners and Ray and the township needs to look closely at the ordinance that they accept on this property, because they're now gonna have to live with that at other places.
That's right. That's what, that's what we're planning to do.
I, I just wanna be sure we all understand what we're, what we're, what, what is being asked. They're not just asking for new zoning on this property, they're going to influence the zoning across everything that's done on Route thirty, and in that way, the township people need to know what's being done. They need to be careful. That's all I'm saying.
I should just say this, what, I think what Ms. Camp said a few times, and I think I said as well, they're not influencing us. What they are asking for is very similar to what
That's fine.
subgroup has already been talking about making for Lincoln Highway. That would be Thorndale Village Center, I believe, uh, right where that is, and then there's Thor, uh, Lincoln Highway, uh, East and Lincoln Highway West, which each have a slightly different, but that would be sitting in the Thorndale Village Center.
That's fine, Mark. I'm, I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying, pointing out that, you know, it, it appeared like this, it appeared like this was being presented as a one-off, and it's really not.
Well, the way they presented it, it was, because they only care about their-
We know that can't be true.
Right.
We know that's not possible.
No, and, and the ordinance that they put together addressed it narrow, narrow scope for their purposes, and that's why that we need to make sure it's a broader scope.
That's fine. Okay, I accept that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we have any other hands raised? Mr. DeYoung?
Well, again, um, not, I'm ready to put a rank line under this, but I don't know how long it's been the junkyard, but I imagine several decades. And I don't know how they're gonna pass the Phase One, Phase Two, and probably a Phase Three audit on people being able to live there. That's gonna be a Herculean test, that if it gets approved, and eventually things happen because the township approving it, is there some liability to the township for having that property?
Yeah, Ms. Camp, can you answer that?
Let me finish. Homes be built. Can I finish the sentence?
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, uh, homes be built.
I'm sorry, what was that, Mark?
I'm just saying it's gonna be very hard for it to pass the EPA Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three audits before you build houses there. And if we allow it to, and once it happens, does the township retain any, you know, liability by allowing this? Not, uh, everything else is great, but you've gotta understand, there's gotta be a lot of contaminants in that clear ground.
I, I don't think you know that-
Yeah, can you direct that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think that's, I, I think that's an assumption. I don't think anybody has the, the information on that. Allowing somebody to develop something because the zoning code permits it does not mean that there's other laws that they don't have to adhere to. Town Township has no jurisdiction over the DEP and the EPA environmental standards. That's something that buyer beware. They have to go get their own Phase One, Phase Two. Nothing in our ordinances. Again, the zoning code is just something that allows them to develop it in a certain manner. If they, if it comes back that, you know, it is contaminated and needs cleanup, then the state, through the Act Two process, will be, and they'll, they'll be, just like Hills of Thorndale Woods. And Dave Gibbons is the engineer on that. He, he knows all too well what it means to have an Act Two site, and it doesn't mean that it can't be developed. It just means that it has to be remediated before it is appropriate for residential development. But to answer your question, there is no liability for the township.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, good concern there, Mark. Appreciate it. All right, any other comments? Ms. Camp, this is all just informational. We're, we'll discuss with you and, and Ray.
Yes, if you, again, just wanna make sure, you know, you're looking at it, you're seeing this, the plan, I wanna make sure you had the opportunity to ask questions. You can examine the plan in more detail. What we'll do is work with the applicant's counsel and put the ordinance together that addresses, you know, some of the issues we talked about, does it on a, a broader scope, and then present that back to you at a future meeting.
Sounds good. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, thank you, Kristen. Thank you, board. Thank you. Have a nice holiday weekend.
You too.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Ms. Camp, that, that finishes off your section.
That's correct. Yes.
If you don't need to stick around, have a great weekend.
Thank you. You too, everybody.
Thanks, enjoy.
Next, on the agenda, we have ordinance and resolutions for consideration. I did let-
Get that tabled.
Yeah, I, I spoke to, well, I text Josh. He's on vacation, so I told him we will table the, uh, the food truck.
We'll be ready to roll at the next.
Yeah, since, since he had some input. Uh, next, for consideration, adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen. This adds a fee for the tort civil claim request from the, uh, County Township Police Department. Chief, you wanna enlighten us on this? Or is that part of the, uh?
So there was, yeah, there was a law that passed within the last year, and we received guidance from the District Attorney's Office as far as the fee structure goes. What it does, it is, it allows victims of crimes to obtain copies of reports, not for criminal purposes, but in order to file a claim against their assailant, whoever the defendant was in the case. And that involves obtaining police reports, um, notes, video, anything related to the case. It's, it's a new law that just passed within the last year.
Are there standard fees, or are these fees would have to be adopted by the township?
So those, those fees currently aren't, aren't in the township fee schedule. It's a brand-new fee structure, and again, it's the same fee structure that the District Attorney's Office used and, or uses and recommends that all county police departments use, so that it's consistent throughout the county.
Okay.
Pretty clean cut. Commissioners, any questions? Residents, any in the township building? None at this time? Any in Zoom world? If there's no further questions, entertain a motion to, uh, accept, uh, adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen.
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, five zero. Thank you, chief. Next one. Consideration for, uh, to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty, to adopt specific guidelines in application for honorary street name designation. Abby, you did a great job putting that together, by the way.
Looks good. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, that was nice.
Long time coming.
Yes. All right, so commissioners, any questions on this? Residents, any questions? None in the township building? Any Zoom world? I really, I really don't like it when it zooms in like that.
It's possessed tonight.
It was possessed Monday night.
I fixed it, but apparently I didn't. I'm sorry.
Well, actually, it was rebooting itself Monday night at the CTMA meeting.
It's being very strange.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll live.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, four zero. And the last one is the fee, twenty, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, to add a fee for the honorary street name designation. I believe it was seventy-five dollars. Questions, commissioners? Questions from residents?
Is, is that fee for the application or for the actual sign?
It's for everything. So we figured the cost of the sign plus the administration and the public works, you know, hanging it up.
That's good.
All right, no, no questions from Zoom? With no further questions, entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, four zero. All right, Jane? Get that all written out.
Yeah, that'll be nice.
All right. Next, we have Finance Department, Ms. Swan. Finance report. Did I miss it?
No.
Okay.
Just amended.
Uh, your finance report should be in your packet. Had a chance to review that. If there's any questions, I can try to answer. Otherwise, I'll move right in.
It looks good.
Do not have any questions. Commissioners, any question?
No.
All right.
Uh, so we are back to the, um, request for the board's consideration to authorize, uh, the renewal, or, excuse me, not the renewal, the reestablishment of the PPO plan for exempt employees. This, again, is, follows along with, uh, the majority of the consortium of municipalities for this plan. for this plan. And, um, basically, again, just asking for a reinstatement of, of that plan, uh, healthcare for exempt employees, which are, uh, non-uniform, non-union.
Okay, and, and I know, uh, Mr. DeYoung had some questions about it earlier, but just to clarify, this is just a renewal of the same policy that the staff already has.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Continuation, okay. Want to make sure. Commissioners, any questions on this?
No.
Moved. Uh, questions from residents? None at this time. Uh, do we go out for bid every now and then?
No, we use Divit, um, which is a trust, and they handle, um, they have different departments. Uh, we use them for our healthcare and our workers' comp. Uh, we use another, um, company consulting firm for our liability. But we do go back and forth every two years or so, um, just to compare, you know, the product from, uh, or for each of the three, actually. So, um, we'll probably go, probably look again next year, 2024, and just, you know, put the feelers out for all three of the packages.
Okay.
Um, and with Divit, we do get, um, uh, a rebate. Um, and it, it's a trust, so the premiums that we pay, uh, get placed into, um, I guess, an investment package as well. Uh, and at the end of the year, we usually get around thirty thousand back. Uh, they also give us a small grant for, um, risk factors, panic buttons, cameras, things of that nature. So, uh, the money that we pay in premiums, for, for, you know, the township pays, um, you get, you do get paid back in some kind of an investment, which is, which is nice. Uh, we belong to two of the trusts right now, so we get, I believe, three percent of our premium, uh, back. If we do decide to join, um, the liability, property and liability, that would be increased to four percent. So each tier adds another layer of, uh, of rebate funds.
Okay. And this just renews January first?
I'm sorry.
This renews January first?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, this wouldn't start until January first.
Okay. We have a hand raised? Yes, Mark?
Quick, very quick question. Just how much has the, um, premium gone up this year from last year?
This year from last year, it went up, uh, seven point eight percent.
So, on the usual medical fields, so.
Uh, I'm sorry, I missed that comment, Mark?
No, I just said it's on the usual, sort of, in the medical field.
Oh, okay. It's kind of standard. Okay. Thank you, Mark. All right, uh, well, if no further questions, entertain a motion to authorize Ms. Swan to renew. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner, uh, Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, four-zero.
Thank you.
Um, I believe
three, four, I guess, three and four, um, next on the agenda, kind of go together. Uh, we have two vehicles, one from the Codes Department and one from the Police Department. Um, and due to the mileage, uh, we'd like to just inform the board that we are transferring the vehicles themselves from Codes to, um, the Police Department and vice versa with the other one. Uh, it just makes more sense that way with the mileage that the Police put on, um, and Codes Department, that, uh, we can, we can do that to, to kind of save the, uh, one of the, one of the vehicles. Um, with that being said, we do wish to ask the board, um, to be able to put, uh, one of the police vehi- or actually, two of the police vehicles, um, on municipal bid for sale. And that will lead into my next topic. We are requesting, and I think we touched base on this last meeting, uh, we'd like to, to, uh, authorize, uh, have the board authorize the Police Department to purchase a vehicle for the CID department, uh, which I believe we plan on, um, adding another individual into that position. So they would need a vehicle as well. So this kind of all is not snowballing, but, but one action, um, actually helps out the other. Uh, with the sale of, um, the two police vehicles, we hope to make about thirteen thousand. That would also offset, um, the CID vehicle that we'd like to purchase as well. We are still waiting for that seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, grant that goes towards the Police Department vehicles. Uh, we're hoping by, um, late October, early November to get that. Fingers crossed, uh, so that will also help offset. I think the only thing we would need is just, uh, the approval of the board to put those two vehicles on, um, municipal bid. So we can do that one first. And then, uh, the second request would be to, um, purchase the CID vehicle, uh, which, by the way, and, and Chief, maybe you can, um, elaborate, uh, elaborate on this. I don't think we're looking for a specific, uh, intense vehicle. Um, if we can find something, uh, left over on the lot, you know, that would definitely be very useful as well. So, Chief, if you have anything to add.
So Mr. Stackhouse needed a vehicle. We have a 2018 Ford Escape that we bought several years ago when we had three detectives. Um, so rather than just have that vehicle sit, um, he's got a ten-year-old vehicle that we're gonna put on municipal. We already have a vehicle that's, uh, listed or ready to be listed on municipal for one of the vehicles that we replaced in our fleet, um, over the summer. Right now, I'm down to one detective. By the end of the year, I, we hope to install a second detective. At one time, we had three. Um, so with transferring that Escape to Codes, um, we have one, one vehicle in criminal investigations, right? We'll need a second at some point. So basically, it's just kind of a transfer of funds, capital funds, that Ray would have otherwise used to purchase a vehicle outright. But this Escape is the size that he would need and meets his needs.
That fills his needs.
It's such a small vehicle for the amount of equipment that our detectives carry, camera equipment, lighting equipment, all the things they need to process a scene. So over the next couple of months, between now and we install the second detective, we're gonna look for a vehicle that is big enough, but obviously fiscally responsible to purchase, considering, um, it, it wasn't something that we really had planned on or budgeted for in 2023. So that's kind of where we're at.
So, so Ray gets the leftovers.
Why not?
Well, you ought to see what I'm inheriting for the time being.
It's that the, the Code's Department has a 2014 Ford Escape that could have never been purchased for a police vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
And this was a perfect, a perfect timing. That's a 2018, but it only had eleven thousand miles. It'll last us.
It will. Okay.
Good thinking.
I don't have an issue with that. Uh, commissioners, any questions? And, and we can just go through a few of them here, then.
No, the only question I had, there was some indication that we needed to also include for Mr. Swan or the chief to sign these documents that are necessary to move these projects forward.
Mm-hmm. And I would suggest just, uh, if we can, have both of you sign it, since we don't have a township manager.
Just have two signatures, just to notify that it's done.
Yeah. Okay. Residents, any questions? None here at the township building? Any in Zoom? See, uh, the first one will be, uh, entertain a motion to authorize Ms. Swan and, and the chief to transfer and sign all paperwork in relation to the, uh, Police Criminal Investigation Department, the CID vehicle transferred to the Building and Life Safety Department. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Second is to authorize, uh, the Police Department to order, order a CID vehicle to replace the vehicle transfer to, uh, Building, Life and Safety Department, and authorize Ms. Swan and the chief to sign all documents.
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, four-zero. And the last one was, uh, for consideration to authorize Ms. Swan to put two, uh, the two police vehicles on municipal bid for sale.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have, uh, check run. Checks, uh, fifty thousand six hundred and twenty-five to fifty thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven with a manual check of two ninety-four. Any questions, commissioners, on this?
No.
No? Questions from residents? None at this time. No questions, uh, entertain a motion to approve. Check run.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tendaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 All right. Ms. Swan, thank you so much.
Much appreciated.
Eight minutes to approve. We do have the July thirteenth, uh, Board of Commissioner minutes to approve. Any questions? Not? Entertain a motion?
They, they changed again today, so I, 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 I just, I'm not gonna keep checking it down the road, but I don't think I can.
Okay. Entertain a motion to, uh, approve?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. No. Whatever I have to say.
Okay. Three to one? All right, and, uh, minutes from the August tenth, Board of Commissioner minutes? Questions? Comments?
I did have, have questions. The, uh, you know, when I, when I was reading it, the opening comments were really watered down. And it lost the color of the meeting and, and the message being put out there. They were approved by board to go that way. And I thought that we lose a lot by watering them down. We'd like to see them reverted to what they were, because I always provide the verbatim of it.
Okay. Well, why don't we, uh, we'll table that, uh, for further discussion. Let's entertain, uh, motion to, uh, accept the receipt of the planning commission minutes from July eighteenth. Commissioners, any questions on those? All right, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, four-zero. Uh, directors report. This is meat and potatoes. We'll start out, uh, with the chief.
So on behalf of a resident, uh, President Mullen requested the Police Department to conduct a traffic study at the intersection of North Lloyd Avenue and Geo Carlson to determine if a multiway stop was warranted at that location. Specific criteria for traffic studies are contained in the U.S. Department of Transportation Highway Administration Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's a mouthful. Uh, multiway stop controls can only be implemented if supported by the following. Um, traffic volume, which means three hundred or more vehicles, uh, over an eight-hour period, or traffic and traffic crashes, which is five or more in a twelve-month period. So the study met the criteria for volume, but not for crashes. And the only way that we could deviate from the current regulatory signage would be to justify why, based on the data, and that has to be done in accordance with Department of Transportation criteria. So at this time, that intersection does not warrant a three-way stop. With that said, um, southbound traffic on Lloyd is three times the volume of northbound traffic. And I would imagine with the amount of development in that end of the township, particularly up on Route 322 with four hundred units going in, that that could continue to impact traffic on Lloyd. So we'll continue to monitor it. And if we need to revisit this, we could do it again in the future. But for the time being, the, the data just doesn't support any changes at that location.
So, so would, um, I guess, I, I know Stephen is here, uh, from, from that area, and I know he'll want to make a comment about this. But what, what-
Parsons 104 Chester Court. I'm, I'm disappointed in the results of the survey. Uh, you know, I've been a resident there for twenty-eight years. The traffic is, it's a death trap, as far as I'm concerned. I, I was trying to make a left turn onto Carlson from Lloyd a few years ago, and I was in a very severe accident. Someone plowed into me. Uh, the, uh, traffic is especially heavy at this time of year, and also, one of the problems we have is the cornfield. You can't see traffic coming around. Uh, so, uh, as far as I'm concerned, as a resident, uh, I'm disappointed. I think we I mean, I'd be willing to kick in for the price of one stop sign. All we need is two more to make a three-way stop. It, it, it's, it's, it's a traffic hazard. If you don't live there, uh, then maybe you can't appreciate it. And I think my comments are backed up by most of the people in, in our development. We've got probably, I don't know, maybe a seven, eight hundred residents, uh, along that strip of Geo Carlson, including Beaver Run Knoll and the single-family homes. And the traffic just gets worse and worse. So again, I desperately would plead for a three-way stop. That's my comment.
Thank you, and, and I'm a resident there, too, and I agree. I see the way, I, I, I'm a resident there, too. I see the way people drive, and I see how bad it is. But I understand the situation that we have with the state.
God forbid, do we need someone seriously hurt there? I mean, what's, what's the cost of two stop signs, for God's sake?
I think that we'd approve them. It's not up to us. It's the state.
It's not, it's not a discretionary thing or an opinion thing. Um, we, it's not a township rule. I mean, this, this, this criteria isn't determined by the township, by the Police Department, not even by the state vehicle codes. Federal highway requirement. And when we do these studies, we really don't have any choice but to abide by the data. We, we capture data there between August ninth and August eighteenth. Um, and in addition to the study, you know, we looked at speed. Um, because we've had this discussion in here many times over the years. Speed, the posted speed limit is based on the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which means, um, whatever eighty-five percent of the vehicles traveling on a particular roadway, whatever speed they travel at, is typically the speed that traffic engineers utilize when they determine a posted speed limit for a highway. And actually, the data that we captured, northbound and southbound, was consistent with the posted speed of thirty-five. I mean, that, northbound, the speed was thirty-four point oh eight, and southbound, it was thirty-six and change. So, right, it's right in the ballpark of that thirty-five mile an hour posted speed limit. And again, there's intersections that I have an opinion about, too, and I, I share your concern, trust me. Um, but when we do these traffic studies, we have to live with the data. And unfortunately, I, I know you're disappointed, but, um, we'll continue to enforce the speed limit, and we'll continue to monitor traffic. Um, we do the best we can with the amount of officers we have. We, you know, we spend a lot of time on, on Lloyd Avenue doing, doing speed enforcement and monitoring traffic and placing speed-timing devices and the portable radar, uh, uh, traffic trailers that we have. So we'll continue to do that. And again, as the development increases and traffic increases, we'll continue to monitor that intersection.
With, with all due respect, Chief, I guarantee the traffic is gonna increase, especially with this, uh, Mytown development that's going up right around the corner.
That's the one I was alluding to. I, I, I don't, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. I'm, I'm not surmising it's gonna increase. I'm sure it's gonna increase.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a stupid question.
Well, again, I'm disappointed, and we'll make a note of this in our Beaver Run Knoll newsletter, and continue to push for two stop signs. I mean, you know, for, again, I'd be willing to kick in. In fact, I'll pay for both of them. How's that? Other than that, have a nice night.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, this is a stupid question. Is it out of the question for anyone to put in a, just before that curve, a sign that says "slow"? You know, the yellow "slow" on the curve signs? Is that something we would need to get, uh, the study passed for?
I'm, Ray, as far as traffic studies go and traffic engineering, it, uh, I can certainly ask our traffic engineer and have him look at the-
I can certainly ask our traffic engineer and have him look at what the regulations are on a municipal road. For that type of sign, I don't think that's regulated by the vehicle code.
I don't either, that's why I asked.
So I can certainly ask him-
That'd be great, because yeah, I mean, the high end of speed in there, coming around that curve. And, and, and you have people on bicycles, and people walking, and people out running, and I know your hands are tied, and, and you do the best job in the world.
Well, we know when all these roads were built, it wasn't with development in mind.
No. It was a horse-drawn sleigh.
They've all become connector roads-
Yeah.
-from the bypass, and people drive on them like they're still on the bypass.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just had a discussion with a resident about Humpton Road, who asked the same, hey, we never, like, where, where are the police? And when I looked at the numbers, in the last eighteen months, we issued a hundred and one traffic citations on Humpton Road. Which is more than any other road, I guarantee it's more than any other road in the township. But when we're not there, people speak.
Oh, yeah.
You know, a hundred and one citations, and that doesn't include written warnings-
Yeah.
-and, and the rest of the vehicle stops we made, but again, when we're not sitting there, people speak.
You're everywhere you can be.
And even when we are, they do, that's why we wrote a hundred and one traffic citations.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And chief, when, when would be the next time that we could actually do a study on there, on that area?
Well, we'll keep an eye on it, it, the, the criteria is five, we, we know the volume's there, right? That it's five crashes in a year. So if we ever get to that point, and we monitor crashes all the time, because that's where we usually try to ensure our officers are paying more attention, because that, that's really the goal for selective traffic enforcement, to reduce accidents or mitigate the potential for accidents, so we'll, we'll continue to watch that intersection, and again, we're, we're cognizant of the fact that there's four hundred units going in just north of the bypass off three twenty-two, so we'll keep an eye on it. You, you have my word on that.
Thank you, chief. Anything else in your report?
Yeah, just one other thing, if, if anyone isn't aware, it's been on the Daily Local, it's been reported all day, that there was a prisoner escape from Chester County Prison. Last sighting was in the Unionville area this afternoon. Hopefully it doesn't happen, but should there be a credible sighting near the township, we have the reverse nine-one-one system to alert residents. So that's something that we would utilize, but if you remember the last meeting I attended, we had a whole bunch of cars that were unlocked and items stolen from, and opened garages during the night that items were stolen from. With a convicted murder on the loose, now is not the time to leave your garage open at night or your car unlocked. I, I say it kind of tongue-in-cheek, but shouldn't any time, but not, not, not with a potential public safety threat of this magnitude in the area. Unionville is twenty minutes away, but it's still close enough for
Close enough.
Nervy.
For caution, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Well, I have, chief? Next we have, uh, fire department, Chief Taylor. Yes, oh, we have a question. Hey, come on up here, Chris. Thank you.
Chris, par five eighty-two Lloyd Avenue.
Hi, Chris.
Hi. Chief, the question is in regards, I, I wanna say thank you very much. I understand there was someone that asked to have those speed detectors put up, but it was fantastic when they were up, because I actually went out on my lawn, and I watched for fifteen, twenty minutes, and it's amazing, once they see that, they slow down. So of course they're going speed limit. But my question is, I guess it would be to Ray as well, can you put something like that up on a state road?
Well, that, again, that's what we would have to have some discussions about, um, you know, whether we can or we can't.
So even with something like that, because of it being a state road, anything like that has to be approved, is that what it is? I, I, I was just curious. Yeah, oh, okay, because I, I've seen, um, in other townships, not so much around here, but they have those, they're solar, and they automatically will tell you if you're going too fast or speed limit, and it's, it was quite evident, only one person, I think it was out of twenty, one person flew by it, but everyone else, the brake lights were going on as soon as they saw it. So I, it was interesting, but thank you very much for doing it.
So we actually have one of those small portable signs mounted to a speed limit sign on Municipal Drive, southbound.
Oh, okay.
So we only have one of those, we have two speed trailers, we try to move them around as often as we can. But you can imagine, I'm sure you can, I shouldn't say you can't imagine, even with that flashing speed sign mounted to a speed limit sign on Municipal, two blocks down, the number of vehicles that we stopped inside it were just completely ignoring it, once they got past it.
Passed it.
Yep.
Oh, well, well, for that brief period of time that they were going the speed limit, it was good, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chris.
And you have allowed us to use your front lawn before without rent for replacing the speed trailer, so, um, well, wanted to thank you publicly for that, because finding a spot sometimes is a challenge. You know, to, to safely locate one of those speed trailers where that's not gonna get run over. So thank you to the par family.
And Abby, I think I saw the hand raised? No? Not at this moment? Okay. Move on to the fire department, Chief Taylor, Patrick.
How are you this evening?
Hello.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes. Alright, uh, so good evening, uh, just a couple things from my report, uh, to touch on, uh, since we've already mentioned my place numerous times. We know at the end of July through very beginning, or I'm sorry, the mid-June through beginning of July, it was closed. Uh, actually, we were contacted by the contractor right before it was opening to help kind of clean up the roadway and wash down. Otherwise, they'd probably still be out there with their garden hose. So we spent, a couple of our members did spend a couple hours with them to try and help expedite that process. So we did help that contractor. Um, and I also, uh, the final thing I wanna mention about the report is, uh, while we didn't have any significant, significant flooding, like what is currently happening with the hurricanes, there were a couple storms that we, we saw in July. One in particular, and I don't remember the date, but I wanna give, uh, a, a shout-out to Public Works, um, that had roads closed with barricades and things like that, preventing any sort of, uh, water rescues and having, uh, our personnel to go out. I think maybe dispatched three times throughout the month for water rescues. So again, thank you to Public Works and, and Huggins and Reg, uh, for their efforts in that. Um, and it's kind of funny, I was sitting at South Bailey until Public Works would get there, and I can't tell you how many times, with my flashing lights on, cars still tried to go in front of me. In a roadway that you couldn't even see the, uh, walkway at the train station. I, all I could do was shake my head. But please do not drive through flooded roadways. I don't know how many times we can post that, say that.
Good reminder.
Thank you.
Unless you want a jet ski as a vehicle, I, I, I would not advise doing it. But we do train in it, so we, we are adverse, and we're adding more folks and more equipment to the water rescue, uh, repertoire. But we don't really like to do it if we don't have to.
Chief, during Ida, I was standing at the foot of the Lloyd Bridge, which was underwater. Waiting for the police, the police were on their way, trying to get that people to not-
It's-
And you know, they were going on the grass, cursing at me, everything, you know, and like, the bridge was underwater!
It, it's, we get the same thing, like I said, I know it's tough, there, there's, to get to the south side of the township, West Bradford, Modena, there's only certain ways you can take, roadways flood, I get that. Uh, but like I said, we're not trying to do it to inconvenience everybody when we close roads, we're doing it for everybody's safety. And then, of course, then when we have to go and rescue, we still get yelled at. We just can't win, and I'm sure Chief Elias can, can attest to that with his staff too.
You're doing the right thing.
You are the, you're doing a great job.
Like I said, I just wanted a little plug on that, especially now that hurricane season and fingers crossed-
Yeah.
-we don't have to experience anything coming up, that's all I have.
Tomorrow is the two-year anniversary.
Yep, sure is.
Of Ida.
Yeah. So let's not have anything on the two-year anniversary, I don't think we're supposed to, it's supposed to be nice.
Nice weekend, yes.
Yes.
Hot!
Have a great weekend, thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick.
Stay safe.
That's, uh, Menquess Fire Company Ambulance EMS Chief Stuart Andrew.
Hello.
Welcome.
You can just say Menquess EMS.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just reading right off the-
Good evening, commissioners.
Hello.
As you saw in our report, we were busy as always, uh, put in perspective, we were shy, just shy of five hundred and fifty calls for the entire coverage area for the month of, uh, July, so we we were a tad bit busy. Thanks to Abby, uh, for the props that we had in the county township newsletter, we are promoting, uh, pretty healthily on our CPR, our, um, community CPR program and our car seat checks, um, we do have car seat technicians in-house seven days a week, uh, during the hours of six AM to six PM, and occasionally into the evening hours. So anyone that's looking for it, all you've gotta do is call the fire station or email, and, uh, we've been more than happy to assist, especially those residents that, uh, wanna make sure that their car seats are installed correctly, properly. And for those that can't afford them, we do have car seats that are available for free, courtesy of, uh, a few of the federal programs that exist out there. So we, we've got a, we've, we've got a plethora of them if anyone is in need. Other than that, you'll see us at the county community days in two, two different spots, one the first aid station and the other at our display table, uh, where we're looking to have some activities, handouts, and goodies for the kids and some for the adults. Unless there's any questions, that's all.
Commissioners, any questions? Abby, we have a question? Yes, Cheryl?
Um, I was curious, um, first off, five hundred and fifty cells, uh, calls is just astounding, but anyway, I was curious if you had been told or had heard any, and I don't wanna start rumors, because, but it's a question that's asked on a constant basis. Has anybody heard anything more about, I mean, I know Brandywine Hospital is going to be taken for the VA thing, but there was, um, it appeared that Penn was gonna build an emergency center, not a hospital, but an emergency center, either, um, up at Brandywine Hospital or even possibly at the Lloyd Farm. Have you heard anything about that?
I have not, no.
No, okay, just wondered.
Alright, thanks Cheryl. Andrew, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, our, our favorite person? Golf course, Ms. Shannon. Nicole, come on up here.
And Nicole, before you start, I just wanna say, uh, I apologize for the, the way that people have been disparaging your great work. So, that's all.
Appreciate that. July was a good month. Hundred and nine thousand dollars in revenue, thirty-three hundred golfers, it's over a hundred golfers a day. Despite the unfavorable conditions of the golf course, uh, we're, they're still coming out to play, we're still the least expensive course around, um, which we've kept those rates low, uh, mostly due to those conditions. Um, and the fact that our carts are, uh, very old and falling apart. But, yeah, this, the last month could have been great, um, but instead it was just good, which we're gonna just post with for now. Hopefully our carts come, but I don't have an update. Been a long time, but again, you know, we are capable of more. The golf course conditions are improving. It's hard to gauge it unless you're there every day, and I'm there every day. We've made a lot of progress since the disaster of March and April, so, um, yeah, overall, a good month.
We need to hear.
Now, I know at our golf meeting on Monday, you had gone over a couple items, the, uh, the greens, uh, of course, some, some of the folks were complaining about it, and I know you, you've been working on that. And also the, the mowers, we're having so, so much, uh, difficult, uh, trying to get them up and running, especially the new one we just had, delivered, what, a few months ago, and, and it's been out of service since, so I just wanted to have you highlight on a few of those items.
Sure.
Give a little reassurance to some of the golfers out there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's frustrating, the, uh, the equipment is old, uh, and poorly maintained, um, until now. So we are, it's kind of catching up with us, equipment is going down left and right, uh, we don't have backup equipment. Each piece of equipment is specialized for the job that it does on the golf course. You can't just have any mower mow this area of the golf course. We do our best to do mechanical things in-house, but for the most part, we have to outsource a technician to work on our machines, um, which will delay grass being cut for a period of time. Um, and if you just happen to play golf in that period of time, you will experience poor conditions. We hope that those golfers give us a second chance. And, uh, yes, the, the brand-new mower that was delivered a couple weeks ago lasted about two hours. And, uh, I should have an update on that, uh, by Monday. Uh, they had to call in an actual technician from the engine company, um, to look at it. There was something wrong with it and how it was manufactured. So, that's where we stand.
We do have the eleven footer showing up, but next, next week, next Thursday, I believe you said?
I am hoping, well, the, yeah, the eleven-foot mower should be in town, um, sometime next week. And, uh, they will deliver it and give us a short tutorial on, uh, maintaining it and operating it, and, uh, we'll get it out on the golf course.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, Nicole, thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you, hang in there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright.
Taking a little break? Ray, uh, we're gonna wait just a second, take a little, you sure? You don't wanna hear Ray speak?
No. Gotta get ready to head out of here myself.
Ah, okay. Well, uh, yeah, what do we have? We, we have a couple, um, payments to, to approve, so you can highlight it, I'll wait for him, uh, to vote on, because he's already read it.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll give you, so I'll give you a couple highlights, just on my, you have my, uh, July report, uh, on a couple construction items along the highway. Sixteen-twenty Lincoln Highway, which used to be the Dairy Queen, uh, that had a UNO issued, uh, it's rebranded, and I apologize, I forget what they rebranded the name, but it's something and barbecue. Um, I, I was made aware of a couple comments, uh, that were flying around about they're not serving ice cream. And, uh, they will be, but there's a franchise issue, uh, that he can't serve ice cream until actually January. Uh, so that's, that's why they're not doing it. He, he had a franchise, there were some franchise infringements, to my understanding, which prevented him from continuing to sell ice cream until come January, I believe.
Don't they have a second location?
Well, yeah, I was gonna say he owns that franchise in Foxburg.
Yeah.
They, they do, so I, I don't know what all is going on there, but that has to do something with franchising. Eighteen ninety-five, the other Dunkin' Donuts had, uh, we issued a permit for an interior and exterior renovation. They obviously waited until the, or it appears they waited until the other Dunkin' Donuts was open. And that Dunkin' Donuts, the new one's open, and the old one down here at the shopping center is now closed under renovation.
Do you know how long are they?
Yeah, it just really depends, I don't. Yeah, I mean, they're doing some major renovations, so, yeah, probably for a while. The new Chipotle in Starbucks at thirty-two oh three and thirty-two nineteen, respectively, is, are flying. I mean, they're framed up, so they're moving right along. Uh, One Hundred Rock Raymond Road, Duckling's Early Learning Center, um, they're not a building yet, but they're doing a lot of earth disturbance and, uh, starting to put some- Um, they're not a building yet, but they're doing a lot of earth disturbance and, uh, starting to put some foundations. And so that building will probably go up fairly quickly. And then, uh, the campus, uh, the old Bob Wagner building, uh, you know, the campus owns that as well. They're starting renovations in that front building and that's also going to be a recreational facility. Um, and right now it's, it's kind of a wide open, uh, plan with, uh, the campus actually occupying three quarters of it and the other piece to it, they're, they're looking for a tenant to do some kind of recreational, um, tenant space. So on to, unless you have any questions about that, I'll move on to the, what's specifically under my agenda.
Any questions on his report?
Thank you.
Yeah, just real quick from a public works standpoint, the municipal park, parking lot, uh, was repaved and striped.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it looks fantastic. They did a really good job. It's ready for, uh, Community Day. Uh, the line striping that we kind of messed up is rescheduled for September, so we should get that done in September. Um, and they just finished, didn't they finish today? The pickleball tennis court, not, they're not finished. They're working on the tennis court, resurfacing the tennis court and putting, you know, new lines down, which will also include pickleball. So they're working on that with the vendor. Um, uh, Ross Bickhart from Gilmore is, I believe, on the line. Um, so I would ask him to actually speak to the first, uh, A, B and C under my agenda.
Welcome Ross. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you as well.
Do you have one of the first, first item?
Uh, Ray, could you just, uh, I need to pull.
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. You probably didn't see it, did you? Um, request for board consideration to approve payment number one in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two and ten cents payable to Forsite Concepts Incorporated, for completed through August fourth, twenty twenty-three in relation to the Reed Street Drainage Improvements Project.
Yes, so the, uh, over the, the, the course of the past month to month and a half, the contractor has made some bit, pretty good progress on construction up at Reed Street, uh, putting in a lot of curb and storm drainage. Uh, so they submitted their first pay application and, uh, everything looks good to us, so we recommend payment for that. And, um, there, they should be submitting another one soon, which we, um, on your agenda in about a month from now. And then following that, our intention is to get a, an application for reimbursement with grant funds out to D C E D. Um, so the summary right now would just be acting on this first, uh, pay application from the contractor, which, uh, we recommend be approved.
Sounds good. Appreciate that Ross. Commissioners, any questions on this payment?
No.
Questions? Uh, questions from residents? None at this time in the township building, none in Zoom world? With no further questions, entertain a motion to approve, uh, payment number one.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Good four zero. Right?
Uh, the second one, I, I think at this point it's worth, uh, just re-mentioning, uh, at the last meeting, I kind of reviewed, change orders with projects. Um, I'd like to add a little bit to that. In, in, on the Reed Street project all along, and that project was, uh, almost four years in the making, uh, there had, you know, we knew that there was going to be field changes. Uh, it's a very old neighborhood, uh, the infrastructure there is very old. Um, the, the width of the roads are not as wide as they probably should be, or we would want them to be today. And residents had, you know, over probably fifty years had walkways that came up into the road, had been parking on the side of the road, you know, and all those things should be expected. So, uh, even though there was a lot of thought and planning going into it, we knew there was, there, you know, there would be field changes and change orders. Uh, there, we, you know, I think all the engineers did the best they could and we did the best we could thinking about that. Uh, I also would make sure that the board understands and recognizes that, again, every change order we get, you know, we have an engineer review it, in-house we review it, uh, we beat the contractor up to make sure it's needed, to make sure that the price is what the price is supposed to be. And then after all that, then you see it on your agenda. Um, even with that, it does not mean that we still don't review it as the project's going on, even after we pay it, so the project can continue, in case there may be legal ramifications in the end. So we're saying that, uh, the second item is request for the board consideration to approve change order number two in the amount of three thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars payable to Forsite Concepts Incorporated for tree and stump removal at fifteen oh three Reed Street in relation to the Reed Street Drainage Improvement Project. Ross, if you can just make a couple of comments about that?
Sure. So, uh, the tree in question is located, uh, really just a couple of feet from one of the storm drains that was to be installed. So, um, running this pipe through the roots of that tree would, would certainly kill it and, you know, cause it to be a safety hazard. And, um, I think this was one of those situations where it was not really clear on the drawings that it was to be removed. So, uh, the contractor would, would not reasonably have known for sure that he had to take it down, uh, as part of the work for his bid for the clearing. So, you know, it seemed fair based on the way the drawings were, were bid out that, that he would be entitled to additional compensation for removing the tree since it wasn't specified to be removed. So for that reason, uh, that's why we're recommending this change order.
Commissioners, any questions on this?
No.
Residents, any questions? None in Zoom world? All right, get the trees in the way. It's just gonna be a mess.
That's a good way.
If it's not removed yet, yeah, it'd be more of a hazard. So I, I agree with this. All right, entertain a motion to approve, uh, change order number two.
All moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good five, four zero. And third item?
Yeah, the next one is, uh, request for board consideration to approve change order number three in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-six cents payable to Forsite Concepts Incorporated for an additional work in relationship to lower inlet number eleven.
Ross, I know you can elaborate on this.
Yes, I can elaborate quite a bit. Uh, let me know if you get bored and cut me off. Just to give you background on this subject. So you may be familiar with the icing on the road that was occurring on Oak Street, uh, on the thirteen hundred block. So that would be west of fourteenth Avenue. Um, there's a constant seep of water that comes up right at the edge of the road and then runs down and across the road. So during summertime, it's no problem, but, uh, in the winter that creates, uh, there's a huge ice accumulations. It's really quite a problem for public works, keeping the roads clear and for, uh, the safety of the road. So part of the Reed Street Drainage Improvements Project was, the intention was to install an under drain that would collect this, uh, this seep of water while it was still underground and pipe it back to our, um, new storm drainage system that is being installed by this project. And so, uh, the difficulty is, so when my company, Gilmore Associates got involved, we were reviewing the drawings and looking at all, everything that was supposed to be built and we were raising some concerns about this under drain because we weren't so sure that running a, a pipe that we'd be able to get all the way down the street to where the water was coming out because it's downhill, um, away from the new storm drains. So that would mean that in order to go down the hill and collect that water and then pipe it back against the way that the grade is running, that means that the new storm drains need to be pretty deep. And we were finding that inlet eleven, which is the subject of this change order, was not actually deep enough to receive that pipe from the area where the seep is occurring. So the, um, the purpose of this change order is to deepen that inlet by around seven feet so that it is deep enough to get a gravity flow under drain to come back uh, essentially up the hill by, by just going deeper underground, uh, so that it can drain out by gravity. And, uh, the amounts of, uh, the cost of the change orders, because the inlet is so much deeper, the contractor has to install a, uh, a few hundred feet of piping from the intersection of Oak and Fourteenth down Fourteenth Avenue to Sansom Avenue, uh, to the alley, I'm sorry. And, uh, so basically the, the extra depth of that work, it makes it quite deep and they have to use, uh, different excavation methods and trench boxes for safety and so forth. So they, uh, felt they were entitled to additional compensation because that's not what was shown on the drawings that they bid. And that we're in agreement with that, which is why we recommend this change order to get those extra costs covered and to also make it so that we can achieve the goals of the, um, of the under drain.
Perfect. Ross, I appreciate you looking into it and finding out that, uh, it just needed a little more care.
It need, yes, yep.
You only have, you only have one shot to do this, right?
Right. You, you do not want to have to go back and try and redo that. It would be very inefficient.
Yes. Commissioners, any questions on this?
No.
Residents, any questions on the change order? None here in the township? None in Zoom world? All right, with no further questions, uh, entertain a motion to approve change order number three.
So moved.
The move? Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, motion's good four zero. Ross, thank you so much.
The, the final thing under, uh, my agenda is, uh, request for board consideration to approve and authorize the board president to sign Gilmore and Associates Incorporated proposal for professional services in the amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty hours, project number twenty-three zero eight zero zero four in relation to the Spackman Davis Farmhouse Roof Replacement. Um, Ross can speak to that as, as Abby could.
So Ross, Abby has roped you into this as well.
Yes, Ab- Abby did contact me about this and, uh, we have a structural engineering department within our company. So I think they're well-suited for this project. And just to give you a few highlights of what's in the proposal, uh, we would actually have our structural engineers come down and do an assessment of the structure of the roof to ensure that since it's, you know, quite old and has the roof has been in a bit poor condition, we want to make sure that the actual structure of the building can withstand whatever new improvements we put onto it. And then, um, we have included in our proposal now, uh, and the services of an architect also to evaluate the historic nature and help select, uh, historic, uh, roofing materials that will maintain the character of that building. And then, and once that is selected and reviewed by the commissioners, then we would be putting together a specification, uh, package for, for bidding for contractors to actually replace the roof.
And Ross, that cost is, that P S A is, uh, not to exceed. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, the, I think you said it was, uh, twenty-two, eight sixty, I believe. So that would be, that would be the maximum unless, uh, something came up that was out of scope, um, that, that you, we all agreed was out in scope. But, um, you know, assuming things go as intended, that would be the maximum. And if it costs us less to do it, we would only bill for, you know, that time that we actually expend.
Ross, I have a question. This is Mark. Um, there's two portions on that roof. There's, there's a front and a rear. Um, I believe the front has already lost its integrity. It's, it's got asphalt up there. Where'd you go? There you go.
Whoa.
It's, it, it, I'm speaking for the historical commission, uh, probably would behoove us to not try to make it historically accurate and look to, uh, a metal roof like we have on the barn, something that's gonna last a hundred years rather than having to redo it every twenty, thirty years. Um, that's just my input. I,
Yeah, Ross, are, are you able to, I guess, have the options? I, you know, because that, that's what we went through with the roof on the barn, that, are, were we gonna go historical or are we just gonna put a metal roof? And of course, the metal roof was cheaper. Um, so if it is an option, but.
And for the, if we were going to try to get any kind of national register for that farm at this point, we would be going for the farm. Or the entire farm rather than the individual buildings. Cause there was a lot of work done inside. I think there were walls put up and, uh, additional room, like bathrooms, a bathroom in the kitchen. It's like,
Yes.
You know, whatever, whatever can keep the cost down and keep the, uh, the beauty there.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of thoughts on that. Uh, one was, uh, we had some, some coordination with Abby and, you know, say we were to be awarded this project and then you just directed us, hey, Gilmore, we don't want you to think about this in historical terms at all. Just don't even worry about that. Act as if it's not, you know, historic building. Uh, then we would, we would basically not need, really, really need the services of the architect and so forth. And we could cut it out, uh, cut about three thousand dollars off of our proposal for that reason. And then there could be potential cost savings too as, uh, in the actual work being done by a contractor. So that, that's certainly an option. And then one other thought about that is that there, there can be, um, metal roof selections that have a historic nature, like of a old farmhouse metal type roof. So if you did want to pursue that, I think that certainly is an option, but there, I think there would be some costs involved in that. But then you do get the, the longevity of that metal roof. So I think those are all things that we would, uh, first, the first step would be to do the structural evaluation and see what we're dealing with. And then we could meet with the township staff and the, and the commissioners to go through some of these options before we get too far down the road. And then we would get some direction on that and then, uh, proceed accordingly once, once it was known.
Well, thank you. And I understand that this is part of a line item that was put in the budget last year for, uh, King's Highway Park improvements.
Yeah, I think we budgeted forty thousand for this year.
Excellent.
Uh, Abby, anything you wanted to add to this? Since you've been working with Ross?
I think Ross summed it up well. Yeah, it's just, it's up to you about the, and, and I agree. I feel like it's kind of sailed at this point with the fiberglass roof on the front half at least.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's gonna, you know.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's perfect, Abby. Thank you.
Keep the cost down.
All right, uh, we do have a hand raised here in the township building. Tony, come on up to the mic. A little closer there. There's no grant for this, uh, roof? Is it great? No.
This isn't for the roof. This is to, this is, this is to determine what would be needed. Uh, this isn't for the roof. We would need a grant for the actual roof. This is structural engineering.
Study.
Study on what's needed.
When you actually, you actually do the roof, do you get a grant?
We would need a grant. We would definitely need a grant.
Definitely would get a grant.
We would definitely need a grant. It's the same as, no grant, I know roof.
You don't get a grant, what happens then?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. All right, Ross, anything else to add?
Uh, just one, one last consideration is that there could be the potential for other grant opportunities if, from historical commission type, uh, agencies, you know, so that could be one benefit to continuing down the path of trying to maintain the, uh, historical look and feel of the building. Uh, but I'm sure there could be some grant opportunities even the other way. But just wanted to throw that out there.
Thanks, Ross. Really appreciate that. And I know that one thing that the historical commission was working steadily on is, uh, um, in, in the soon-to-be-proposed historic preservation ordinance, uh, all the language was set up so that we could qualify to become a certified local government. And once we're a certified local government, the doors open up to waves of funds. We go, it's like, go to the front of the line. So, um, I really appreciate all your thought you put into this.
My pleasure.
All right, Ross, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions on this?
No.
None? Residents, one more time around? None at this time? Entertain a motion to, uh, approve and authorize the board.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner, uh, Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 And motion's good four zero. All right, additional business? None at this time? Public comment? Oh, yes. Patty, how are you?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, Joyce. I don't know why I'm picking Patty.
And I live on Municipal Drive, six oh four Municipal Drive. Uh, my questions tonight.
And I'm sorry, can you just kind of peel that down a little bit? Oh! Yeah, maybe it's easier to hold it. I'm sorry about that.
Sorry. Uh, my concerns tonight are about the pickleball court that is going in. I was just wondering, uh, will it be open to everybody? Is it going to be free? Is it going to be, is no, no fee associated with it?
So at this time, we're planning on treating it just like we did the tennis court, which is first come, first served. If, if the enthusiasm becomes overwhelming, we might have to revisit the policy, but it's never been a problem with the tennis court. It's just not getting so much use. So while I hope that the use goes up, we're not planning on doing that right now.
Okay. So are the tennis courts locked?
They're not currently.
You can just go on to them at any time?
Yep.
Will you provide nets?
The nets are, um, we are just using the tennis nets that are installed.
Will you be providing the nets for the pickleball courts?
Uh, no, the pickleball will just use the existing tennis nets as well, which I've been told is something that they do other places too.
Okay, cause for pickleball with a tennis court, you divide the tennis court and then you put a net on either side?
I've seen that as well, but the, the way they decided to do it, and this was discussed extensively at Parks and Rec, was to draw the, instead of trying to have someone play tennis on one side and two people playing pickleball like perpendicular to the tennis court, we just superimposed the pickleball court over the tennis court. So it will be one or the other at a time. And the pickleball lines are just a different color and it's, you know, smaller to accommodate pickleball, but they would use the same exact net.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Not really. Sorry, sorry, because where I play pickleball at is up in, in Honeybrook. And it's, they have two tennis courts there. And you can play four pickleball games at a time, utilizing one half of each tennis court for one game. Okay.
No, I know exactly what you mean. We just don't have the staff to go down and like monitor an extra pickleball net that's not permanently installed in the ground like the tennis nets are.
So what Twin Valley does, if I might suggest, what they do is the township has provided four nets. And they have them in a box, a storage box outside their township building. And as when we go up there and we want to play pickleball, we just pick up the bag with the nets in it and take it there. And when we're done, we take it right back to the township building and put it in the storage thing. And we also up there have times reserved for pickleball, six to eight in the evening, Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings, hours like that too. So I'm just thinking of suggestions.
Yeah, no, there's definitely a lot of different ways that other places have set it up and we did research those. But in the end, for our first foray, we were trying to limit how much the front office staff were going to be involved, honestly. So that this was the kind of lowest common denominator solution we came up with, but super popular, so I would not be opposed to adding more pickleball courts elsewhere. Anyway, but yes, I, I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
You.
Thank you. The public comment? Come on up to the mic. Name and address.
Good evening. My name is Maki Christofaratos. I am at thirty-five twenty East Lincoln Highway. I'm a new resident as of November twenty twenty-two. And bear with me because I'm new to this township meetings.
Well, welcome, welcome, yes.
Yes.
So I have two issues and both are under the noise ordinance. And the first one is related to commercial trash dumpsters by A.J. Blazensky and then the, the smaller company Eagle disposal. And since November, they would come and pick up commercial dumpsters at three AM, four, five, and at, at latest, six AM. And if you hear what a dumpster sounds like in the middle of night, it sounds like a dumpster going off. And.
And which, which property, commercial property are they picking up the trash?
The entire Lincoln Highway that I can visually see and hear. They're picking up every single dumpster from every single business. And I've tried speaking with the, both companies. And they have told me they have spoken to the drivers, but it goes in one ear and out the other. I spoke to the drivers and the drivers told me they were never told anything and they are following their route. And, and recently the trash companies have not returned my phone calls or emails or messages. And then I, I reached out to the police and members of the township. And I've been told that this has become, this is a civil matter and I need to go to court about resolving this. And I recently spoke to every single house on Lancaster and on Lincoln Highway. And I, and there was about, I have the number. And I also went to Hazelwood, which is over the train tracks and spoke to every, every single house that, that answered to me. And I have about twenty addresses that all have said that they hear the dumpsters, some of which have told me have been dealing with it for seven years. And, and others say that they hear it, but it doesn't bother them. And so I'd like to address this on behalf of them because I believe according to the township, no one has ever made a complaint. And I, you know, I'm ruining my quality of life. And that's pretty much not for the dumpsters. And I just would like it to be after seven AM, which is the noise ordinance time. It's a fair.
Yeah, can I just direct that to Ray? Ray, what, what's our?
Well, I think, I think the resident summed it up. I'm, I'm not sure how we're supposed to regulate that when we've also mentioned it to the trash haulers. The police have responded every time the resident has called. We can never identify exactly where they're picking the trash up. Uh, you know, I'm, I don't have a good answer. I mean, it is a commercial corridor. I'm not sure what else.
So they're hired by the commercial property?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the township.
From the township.
The noise ordinance.
Yeah.
But, Pat, can you, can you?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Pat, come on up. Just name and address real quick, Pat.
Oh, sorry. Pat Wakefield, one sixty-five Apple Door. This has been going on. It, it sounds like an atomic blast. And, or one day, one night I thought the train derailed. And you, you wake up like that, your heart is literally outside your body. And I get the people at Denver and they're like, oh my gosh. And they said, the person who answered the phone, the accountant, she said, it's happening all over the township. It's like the trash disposal people have gone rogue. And then you've seen West Whiteland and a couple of other townships are now citing Blazensky and bringing suits against them.
I read that article, yeah.
Because they're defying the contract. They're, so basically they're nullifying the contract. They work for us that we're allowing them to do business in this community, not at three AM or whenever they choose to. I understand they have a staffing shortage. Who doesn't? But it doesn't mean you set your own hours. And I understand the, the commercial businesses, you know, they employ this service on their own and they pay for it on their own. It's not with township funds. But it's the same Blazensky does the residential and the commercial. You know, that, we have the residential contract with them. So it's, it's defying logic, but I know they're having problems because they were recently purchased and things like that, and they're having operational problems. But it, it can't go on like this. I mean, there's kids being awakened and, you know, people who are sick and whatever. And people who are, they can't get any sleep. You know, they're working different shifts and things like that. You can't go to sleep, back to sleep after being awakened like that.
Pat, I, I understand. I, the, in New York, my, they would come and pick up the trash dumpsters at five, six in the morning. And it is crazy sound to wake up to.
It's meant like three and four, but the thing of it is.
A letter or anything from the board?
Well, the, the other townships are just finding them. They're citing them. Whiteland and somebody else has just started doing it because it, they're, they're even doing worse than that. They're not even picking up the trash completely in the recyclables and whatever. So it's, it's really getting out of hand.
But Ray, with, with the noise.
We can't just cite them. We can't just cite them for when they're picking up trash. We would have to cite the property owners. We can't, we can't just cite the trash haulers.
For the noise ordinance?
Here's the other side of that. The property, we've called some of the businesses. They have, one business actually told them, I don't want your service anymore, and they still keep coming. That, that, the business owners, they don't want this either. So it's out of control. So somebody, you know, needs to put some kind of boundary in place. I mean, we already have an ordinance in place and they're just defying it. So I, I just don't think it's logical to keep having it going on.
Excellent point.
Yeah.
Well, we'll talk to Scott as well because he's responsible for our waste recycling.
Yeah.
Just to add to what Ms. Pat said, that one of the businesses also that I spoke to had said, well, thank you for letting us know. We called them and we changed our pickup time to afternoons. And then they were, they did not change that. The, the business told me, so we don't understand what's happening. We told them, come in the afternoon and they're still showing up at the same times. They're not, their word is not getting.
Okay.
So moving on to the next.
Maybe the board can send a letter to Eagle and Blazensky saying, we understand that you're not in compliance with our noise ordinance with your pickup times to start this process, something like that too.
Yeah, Kim, let's get Scott to reach out to these folks first.
Yeah, we, we did. I mean, we did once, but I mean, I think Scott's maybe still on here. But we can again, I mean, I'll talk to Kristen Camp about the, the problem, the problem with the noise ordinance. Like any of our ordinances, it has to be directed at the property owner. We can't just randomly chase down.
That's what needs to be done, unfortunately, but.
Well, but the problem is, I mean, I, you know, I, like, one complaint was, well, it's this business. I went to that business. It wasn't that business because their dumpster was still full. So it definitely wasn't their trash hauler. So that's the problem we run into on Lincoln Highway. But, but I do agree with you. I mean, we certainly can reach out or, you know, as, as a municipality, we could write a letter to those haulers. That could be, that could be one. And one of them, we do contract for our own trash haul. You may want to be careful about how that's worded or nobody's trash will get picked up potentially, but. Well, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that's correct in the whole township, but.
They've, they've gotten their straight, they've got it straightened out, at least where I live. They were, they were missing everything. They do have that straightened out.
And, and since I've moved in in November, you know, this has been happening every, mostly every Monday morning. And so I'm, I'm sure the township has looked into it a couple of times, but I, I have pictures of them going to every business that I could take a video of them or picture of them picking up the dumpster. And, and in one instance, I can't see a dumpster from where my property is, but you see the, the trash truck go behind the business. You know, you hear the noise and then it comes out. And again, it, they may not pick up everyone's at the same time, but usually they, I guess logistically, they try to pick up as many as they can. And.
All right, correct. Okay.
So then if we'd like to move to the next, the other, the only other issue that I have. And that would be with thirty-five twenty-seven Academy Sports Complex. And since November, as I've moved in, I noticed that from Monday through Friday, from ten PM to one AM, they're at their busiest time. It seems as if those are the only times they're open. And their, their customers usually in half hour intervals will come out and loiter the parking lot and be yelling and screaming and whistling and even sit in their cars and blast music. And I have videos of all this and even I have videos of them working on their cars, playing soccer in the parking lot, fighting in the parking lot. And I have all video of that, which I can show if you'd like, of them doing all of this and, and more. And that they are, I can hear them through my windows yelling and screaming. And I can only hear the highs, the lows, the, and, and I give them a chance to, to leave at least fifteen minutes when they're leaving and they, you know, sometimes it takes them a little longer to leave. But some of them, if I don't make a call, they will stay there until one AM or later. But usually it's one AM is the cutoff and they, they just loiter in the parking lot. And so having had brought this up to the police, the police maybe fifty times have come out and dispersed the crowds and made them leave. And, and few occasions have taken names. And I have was, I've been told that, to try and reach out to the business. And the business told me that if they see a problem, that their employees would handle it. But I also have video, which I can show you, that the management, but who the, I'm sorry, the police had told management also had said, every now and then, try to clear the parking lot out and, you know, see that people are not loitering and make them leave. And management had said, we will do that and we have been trying. And I can show you video of management getting in their car and leaving to go home, locking the doors and leaving parking lot full of different groups to loiter and not telling them to leave. So they're not doing their part and, and.
Chief, do you want to weigh in on this? I mean, if, if we have folks loitering that late, that early in the morning, do you have anything to add to that or any, any reports from the officers?
Well, there's a loitering. So the businesses are typically the victim of people who loiter on their property. I, I, so I think we're looking at two different issues here. The, the sound that's an annoyance to the resident and people who are legally parked and congregating on the property owner's property and they don't mind. So unless when we arrive, there's actual disorderly conduct going on, you know, there's, there's nothing for us to cite for other than, you know, asking them or politely telling them that, you know, they're, they're, we got a complaint and they're loud and they're, they're annoying the resident. But unless there's something criminal going on, there's not a whole lot that we could do at that point. And we've, I lost count how many times we've been dispatched there. And I can't find a report where our officers arrived and, and found people yelling and screaming or fighting other than just being there. And most of it had to do with, I think, a food truck that the business used for people who were at the sports complex late in the evening. That's how we initially started to get involved. The complaints were primarily about people being there for the food truck. And then I think it's just progressively gotten worse.
So I would like to add that the, in, in recent time, the, the food truck had contributed to the loitering and things. And I might say that things were worse previously, but have gotten better since the food truck is not there because they did not have a, a food license. And they were forced to leave by the food inspector. So, but since then, because I, I also have video of cars arriving from Lincoln Highway who were not even relative to the sports complex. They were just customers of the food truck. And they would then eat in the parking lot and hang out. And so since they have left, I can thankfully say that it has gotten better. And, but it wasn't directly from the food truck as they, they were behind the building that I could not see.
Okay. And, and does this happen more on the weekend or in the week?
During the week. On, on the weekends, the business is visually closed. The doors are locked.
Okay. During the week, they're there till one in the morning?
Typically, on, on average, eleven to twelve is when they let people out, but then the people will linger. Last night it was twelve twenty-five. But they, they, they left without, in peace. Tonight, I'm sure it will be again.
Okay. And I think we're just going to have to internally
Yeah.
figure out if there's a solution to this.
Yeah.
And I would love to add to the solution. I just, I know that it will be very difficult to come up with something as we're saying that, you know, where does this fall? It's not criminal. I, I understand that. And. you know, where does this fall? It's not criminal. Uh, I understand that and um you know, and I don't, I don't know the answer either. I'd like to come up with one.
Okay. So if the if the business owner took a stand, there's, there's a a section in the Crimes Code code called loitering and prowling at nighttime, right? So if the business owner posted the property, you know, no loitering probably after hours and people continue to do so, then we would be able to cite them for it. But again, and I think the gentleman attested to the fact that he's seen the property owner leave and not take exception to the fact that people were remaining on the property. So when when we get there again, unless there's some other type of criminal activity afoot. Maybe they're adults. They're not, they're not underage children. Um, so there's really nothing we could do other than to try to keep the peace.
And with the noise ordinance, actually do anything? They're that loud?
The the problem, the problem with the no, the problem with the noise ordinance is I I have to be there. I have to witness it and it has to continue for a certain amount of time. So that's, that's the problem. But what, based on what the chief is saying, I guess maybe one of the things, like we said about the trash haul, it might be a stern letter from Scott or or the county in general. The 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 loitering uh issue, you know, let me look. I mean, maybe we need to change our focus to the property owner.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not sure, but I I can look for something to to see, you know, if there's a way to to let him know that this is progressing. It's his property, his management, uh, because he he hires somebody. I've I've spoken to them as well. He hires somebody that manages the facility and maybe let him know what's going on and that, you know, it's starting to look negative on him. And maybe he needs to take a stronger interest on, you know, who's managing the actual sports complex.
And Ray touched on something um as far as the noise ordinance goes. So it's, it's it's ours, of course, and decibel level.
Correct. And I purchased a sound meter.
We have to witness it.
Yeah.
The problem is when we get a call or a complaint from a resident about a trash truck making a lot of noise, by the time we get there, that noise is long dissipated.
And I have video, so that could help.
But that, yeah, unfortunately, in a court of law, it it doesn't. I've been, unfortunately, I've been down this road before. It, I can't use your video. Now, say we went to court, say we were able to go to court. First off, I have to witness and I have to take the video. I could get you to come to support that, but I wouldn't be able to use your video as the only evidence. That's why I said I think maybe the approach has to turn towards Mr. Rudy, who actually owns the property. You know, and try to take a different angle.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss this and figure it out. Could you leave your information with Denise just so we can reach out to you?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Right now?
Uh, it, yeah, by the end of the meeting here, we're, we're almost done. We're wrapping up soon.
Thank you.
But I appreciate you coming up here. Thank you. Oh, yes. Public comments, uh, no more. Oh, we have one more here in the township building. Just name and address.
Jonah Conway, three fifteen North Bailey Road. I was going to ask for a traffic study for um North Bailey and Windsor, but the chief, obviously, the el- the uh gentleman earlier kind of put that at ease for me. Um, I've been here about eight years. Since the craft house closed, traffic there has got a little better at night, but I've lost three mailboxes and one dog.
Wow. And one dog.
You know, it's twenty-five miles an hour. If they were, and I see the chief puts up the, you know, the carnival lights with the radar, you know. Um, fortunately or unfortunately, I've been in law enforcement twenty-eight years, still active. Um, they don't stop. I know that. Um, they do the speed trap. I've gotten caught in myself, you know. Um, I get it, you know. Um, we're all hurting for law enforcement hires. Um, but I I just for that intersection there, sooner or later, a kid's gonna get killed. Um, they come over that hill. Days and nights over the hill. They come down the hill. I can sit there and watch them. They don't stop. Um, like I said, I haven't been here long enough, so I don't know. Does the township entertain speed bumps? Or is that a traffic safety?
We've discussed that before, Chief.
Yeah, I'm sure you have.
I I I personally would be highly opposed to speed bumps.
For?
Uh, ambulances and fire trucks, it's about the worst issue.
I'd have to argue with that.
No, there's a couple.
No, I understand that, but but you're talking about um the response time for an ambulance and a fire and even law enforcement, speed bumps slow down, but doesn't stop them from getting where they gotta go. EMS, I'm sure they don't do it different in the county. You stabilize before you leave. The patient's stable.
I'm not, I'm not talking about response time. I'm talking about wear and tear on the vehicles.
Well, you're talking about property then, over life.
You can argue that with those people.
No, you, you brought it up, not him. You brought it up.
I would argue against them all day long, every day, week.
Property over life. Okay. Does the township ever entertain red light cameras or speed cameras for thirty at least with all the the businesses and the construction for the housing? The influx in cars and traffic. Has that ever been talked about yet? Or just something we're not in interested in? For income revenue at least, in the future.
And Chief, you want to comment on that?
Cause I I brought some of this up years ago when Chief Scott.
You're talking about Lincoln Highway?
Yes.
Um, so we had, um, it took us years, believe it or not, to get Penn Dot to properly post Lincoln Highway for speed enforcement because according to the vehicle code, the speed limit has to be posted every half mile in order to enforce it. And we've begun uh within the last uh year, we have lines painted. You'll see it on certain parts of of Lincoln Highway. So that's, that's been the extent of of our enforcement efforts. We really haven't discussed red light cameras. Just has never come up before.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
And we did, we actually did a um we did a traffic study at that intersection you're talking about. And again.
What's it short on accidents?
Previous gentleman was really disappointed, but we, you know, it's five it's five crashes in a year plus plus volume. Um, and like we have a record management system that's electronic. You're in law enforcement, you know what I'm talking about. So like I could go in and I could put an intersection in and I could mine that uh R M S for for data. So I hope he didn't get the impression, the previous gentleman, that when I said we conducted that study over eight or nine days, that it was because there was no traffic crashes there between eight or nine days. Because of that did not warrant, I mean, it's five crashes over any twelve month period, not during a calendar year, not during a fiscal year over any twelve month period. And um, it's not a discretionary thing. I mean, the criteria is what it is.
Okay.
You know, you gotta, unfortunately, there's a lot of things in our profession that we have to live with, whether we agree with it or not, and that's, that's one of them.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, I I don't think any of us are opposed to things like red light cameras at all. It's just a matter of.
I mean, we're, we're talking about, they do it in obviously major metropolitan city. This here isn't at that level. But, you know, you're getting more and more traffic, more and more people. The roads are becoming more more clustered. I mean, speeding here isn't as bad as it is in other parts. They have that implemented, but it generates revenue to some extent, which would help down the line. I mean, I probably won't be around by them, but you know, at some point in time, you would hope that there's some sort of avenue of revenue when you have that much more and not just on a tax bracket, you know. Um, listen, you want to speed through Cal? You might get a ticket. Go through a red light, you might get a ticket.
I would like the state to wake up and start looking into implementing Vision Zero. You know.
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Vision Zero. You know, I mean, but they're not doing it. Our police are doing the best they can with what they've got to work with. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate the uh comments.
I I just to clar- the whole idea of red light can't be in a Lincoln Highway is a Penn Dot highway. Is that a Penn Dot?
Yeah.
It it is, and we certainly have had those conversations. We can continue. I mean, the next, especially the next time we do, you know, some kind of upgrade or we have a development going in, you know, when they're doing traffic studies and all that, it's probably definitely worth, you know, worth having those conversations.
Thank you. And Abby, you said there was somebody online? Okay.
Uh, I know that everyone, I know that everyone's tired and it's very late and I will make this quick, but I would like to bring up uh Lloyd Farm because two things have changed over the past eight weeks. This past week, I was given, I was sent some photographs of the interior of the Lloyd Farm. All of the banister on all of those uh staircases that go up three stories in a circle are gone. So that if anyone falls or steps off that thing from the upper floor, they're going to die. The entire building is one hundred percent open. The the basements are open. The whole thing is open. Um, kids are in there. The the likelihood of someone falling and injuring themselves has now increased dramatically. Whether there's a rape or a fall or whatever. So that was one thing that's happened over the past two weeks. I asked to be given those photographs and it was a young person who wouldn't give them to me for fear that they, you know, they're not supposed to be there. A number of weeks ago, and you have to ask, the police chief maybe can speak to this, a number of weeks ago to maybe even a month or more ago, I was given, I was sent to Cal and Watch two emails from parents who had found an email on their children's kid teenagers photos from downtown high school that about a a potential party. They were gonna have a big party up there at the Lloyd Farm. And I think she called the police and I I was told later that they did something about, there were, there were groups of children, kids, these are teenagers, in St. Martha's uh parking lot gathering and at the Taco Bell gathering to have a big party up there. Now, I know that in the past, we've said we can't do anything about this. And I also know that Callan can't be sued if something terrible happens. That isn't going to absolve us of the responsibility to do more than we've done. So I would ask, because I was told by somebody from a different township, that in fact, we do have rights under the state code and we may have to adjust our own ordinance, whatever, but there are ways to deal with that house. And it really has to be dealt with because at some point, I'm gonna tell you right now, those, that staircase, you're talking about ten foot ceilings up three stories. And the the center of it is all open. So if you step off, you go, go straight down three stories. You won't live.
It sounds like, you know, these kids are trespassing.
Oh, absolutely, but it's not closed up.
That's the first issue we should be dealing with.
Well, you can deal with that as an issue, but the reality is, it's, it's an attractive nuisance is the word. It's become an attractive nuisance that that attracts young people. And yes, they are trespassing, but it's also.
Ray, do we know if it's open again?
Yeah, it is.
And is Miller still responding to things?
I was there. It's open.
It's open?
It is open.
Yeah.
Should be boarded up?
He boards it up on a regular basis.
Oh, oh, they tear it down?
Well, you know, that's fine. That's not, you know, at one point he had fencing around and he took it all away. If he has to fence it, fine, but I'm gonna tell you something. If somebody hurt, goes down, yes, he'll be sued, but so will the township take it in the, the township's gonna take a hit. No, we can't be sued. That's not the point. And in the meantime, the police, you know, you can't, there's no way to get up there, that driveway. You can't get a police vehicle. You can't get an ambulance. Somebody's injured, you're done.
Was there an actual party? I mean, your original comment was that there was a a gathering that was gonna happen? Did that actually happen?
No, they stopped it. I was told the police stopped. Parents went down there and and raised hell with the kids. Yeah. I I was also told police came. Is that true?
Chief?
I can't hear.
You gotta get to the microphone and that's all count, all those places. So how did Downingtown Police?
Okay, so people down in Dog Park, we could hear the stuff being ripped apart. We could hear the screaming and everything. And we could see them coming up. Uh, they come up through the Taco Bell and uh back of St. Martha's and everything. They come up through the cornfield. So we would hear if they, they're bringing tools. They're like banging and ripping and whatever, since it's like construction. We would call the Downingtown Police and they were right on it. So, but it was like almost an everyday occurrence when school was in. So the party that Cheryl was mentioning, yeah, they were gonna have a big uh end of year school blast.
Yeah.
Downingtown Police got them right away, but school's back in session again. And I have not seen the house because it's all planted over and everything right now, but I, it was pretty bad in the winter. I mean, they what, what's his face, uh, Miller? He boards it up a lot. He's he's gotta be sick and tired of doing it. What do you do if you, a day later, they come with utensils?
There are ways to deal with that.
The chief was gonna say something and.
No, go ahead.
Has not been able to to respond.
Hi, Mrs. Spaulding. I I just want to correct uh a misunderstanding maybe on on your part. I'm very familiar with the incident that you're talking about and I think you had put out information that day that the Callan Police would not respond. And that residents were to call the state police and that that's just not true. Um, that is private property. There are certain limitations. But in a situation that involves any threat to public safety, um, we're a hundred percent gonna respond. There's no need to involve any outside agencies. And actually, I was standing on the front porch of that property the day that that erroneous message was sent out. And I say this respectfully because I
That's fine.
I know, I know you you were well intended. Um, but we were working very closely with Downingtown P D and the Downingtown School District. And for two nights in a row, when that party was alleged to have occurred, I had officers there um on the property and fortunately, nothing happened.
I I I don't mind your comments at all, uh, Chief, and and I certainly uh, respect your opinion and I will take that into consideration. That's what I was told. But all that having been said, the position that the township has always been that it's private property, we can't do anything about it. And I'm gonna tell you that I was told by, and and you know, this is a different township, but that they, you know, once something becomes uh, an attractive nuisance, as this is now clearly an attractive nuisance, it's attracting kids, that there is information in the state ordinance that permits us to do something about it. So all I'm asking is, I think we need to talk to Kristen Camp and find out exactly what we can do under the overall ordinances and what that we can, by that, I mean, apparently you are allowed to, I I was told from another township, you are allowed to send, basically send Miller a letter. You tell him he has an attractive nuisance. If he doesn't take care of it, the township can go in, board it up, put the fences around it, fine him plus ten percent of the cost. And that's been done.
We have, we have sent him letters and he repairs them. And I'll remind you of something, Ms. Spaulding. At this very moment, if you push that guy any further, there's nothing to stop him from coming in and getting a demolition permit. There's nothing to stop that.
I understand that, Mark, but the problem is at this point in time.
You're gonna lose the house if if you push him, if you like do this, put up a fence and find him. He's gonna just take it down. We can't stop it right now. So we'll tell him to board it up again. And people need to just.
Mark, I understand what you're saying, but the reality is, at this point in time, you've not been there. I've seen the pictures. At this point in time, the possible, the prob- and I hate this. Don't misunderstand me. The probability of anyone saving that house is probably ten percent. There's nothing left of it.
All right, Cheryl. I I know it's getting kind of late.
Yeah, it's fine.
We'll, we'll look into this. I appreciate you bringing it, bringing it to our attention.
Yes, thank you.
If there's any other public comments, uh, if not, I will entertain a motion for agreement. So moved. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm meeting adjourned. Have a safe and happy Labor Day weekend, everyone. Thank you.